Hi. You have to make your like that.
Everybody, can you hear me? All right, y'all can hear me back there? Testing one-two. Turn it, you want to turn it up? Am I getting a little feedback?
Top mic.
Testing. Is it this one? That one in? Or this one up here, you think? Turn the recording mic down a little bit.
It's muted.
Is it muted? The ringing going?
There you go.
Okay, good. I call this, uh, April 23rd, 2013, regular city council meeting to order. We do have a poem coming back there. Um, I'd like to ask Councilman Joe Gabia if he'd like to give you an invitation.
Yes, thank you.
All right.
Dear Almighty, we thank you for the blessings you bestow upon us. We thank you for the freedoms that you allow us in managing our lives and our government. It's been a very tumultuous week for us as a nation, and we have people that we need to keep in our mind for being real heroes and sacrifices for what happened. I wanted to make sure I read eight-year-old Martin Richard, 23-year-old Lou Lindsay, 29-year-old Crystal Campbell, and 26-year-old Officer Sean Collier. All murdered last week in the name of freedom. We meet tonight in a hall where freedom rings loud and clear. We have highest regard for these people. We send our deepest prayers and wish their families the best. And let us not forget the country that we live in and those that try to fight us for what we hold so dear, and that's our freedom. Thank you. Thank you.
All right. Madam Clerk, if you will please call a roll.
Yes, Mayor Jay Mose Davis.
Here.
Councilmember Rebecca Chase-Williams, District One.
Here.
Councilmember Jim Meyer, District Two.
Here.
Councilmember Bates Madison, District Three.
Here.
Councilmember Joe Gabia, District Four.
Here.
All are present.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. You all please stand to pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God and indivisible, with liberty and justice as our own.
Thank you. And thank you, Joe, for remarks about the events of last week. We're working also to ensure that Brookhaven will be prepared in the unlikely but possible event that something like that might happen here. I've already spoken to our chief about it, and we have, in National Living in Brookhaven, we have Colonel Sutton, who's the army liaison between the army and civil governments when it comes to emergency planning. So we're very lucky to have him here. He's offered his help to get us an emergency plan. Also, we have some swearing in today, and I know these are, our oaths are kind of long, so bear with us, but they're important, they're thorough for a reason. I'd like to invite up Chief Gary Andura and Deputy Chief Don Freeman. If you please, repeat after me. Raise your right hand. I state your name.
I, Gary Andura.
You solemnly swear or affirm.
I solemnly swear or affirm.
That I will faithfully execute the office of Police Chief of the City of Brookhaven.
I will faithfully execute the office of Police Chief of the City of Brookhaven.
I will faithfully execute the office of Deputy Police Chief of the City of Brookhaven.
I will faithfully execute the office of Deputy Police Chief of the City of Brookhaven.
And will to the best of my ability.
And will to the best of my ability.
Support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
Support and defend the Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of Georgia.
The Constitution of Georgia.
And the Charter.
And the Charter.
Ordinances.
Ordinances.
And regulations of the City of Brookhaven.
Regulations of the City of Brookhaven.
I am not the holder of any unaccounted-for public money.
I am not the holder of any unaccounted-for public monies.
Do this state.
Do this state.
Or any political subdivision.
Or any political subdivision.
Or authority thereof.
Or authority thereof.
I am not the holder of any office.
I am not the holder of any office.
Of trust under the government of the United States.
Of trust.
Trust under the government of the United States.
Under the government of the United States.
Any other state.
Any other state.
Or any foreign state.
Or any foreign state.
Which I, by the laws of the State of Georgia.
Which I, by the laws of the State of Georgia.
And prohibited from holding.
And prohibited from holding.
I am otherwise qualified to hold said office.
I am otherwise qualified to hold said office.
According to the Constitution.
According to the Constitution.
And laws of Georgia.
And laws of Georgia.
I will perform my duties of my office.
I will perform my duties of my office.
In the best interest of the City of Brookhaven.
In the best interest of the City of Brookhaven.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Without fear.
Without fear.
Favor.
Favor.
Affection.
Affection.
Reward.
Reward.
Or expectation thereof.
Or expectation thereof.
Now, there's a second part just for y'all. I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I swear to never betray my badge.
To never betray my badge.
My integrity.
My integrity.
My character.
My character.
With the public trust.
With the public trust.
And I will not be influenced.
I will not be influenced.
In any manner.
In any manner.
On account of personal bias.
On account of personal bias.
Or prejudice.
Or prejudice.
I will always have the courage.
I will always have the courage.
To hold myself.
To hold myself.
And others.
And others.
Accountable for our actions.
Accountable for our actions.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you. We're good? You got everybody?
Yes, yes.
Take away. You want my hand on my back?
One more with the shaking of the hands, please.
All right. You got it? Say it again. All right. We're good? You got everybody?
Yes, yes.
All right. Take away. You want my hand on my back?
One more with the shaking of the hands, please.
All right. You got it? Say it again. All right. We got two more. I need Shannon Cameron, Adrian Schmidt. All right. All right. Please, or repeat after me, and I'll try to, this is, if you listen to the other one, here's the topic for y'all to kind of look to get lost. All right, on my honor.
On my honor.
I state your name.
I, Shannon Cameron.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will faithfully execute.
That I will faithfully execute.
The office of Commissioner.
The office of Commissioner.
Of the Planning Commission.
Of the Planning Commission.
Of the City of Brookhaven.
Of the City of Brookhaven.
And will to the best of my ability.
And will to the best of my ability.
Support and defend the Constitution.
Support and defend the Constitution.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
The Constitution of Georgia.
The Constitution of Georgia.
And the Charter.
And the Charter.
Ordinances.
Ordinances.
And regulations.
And regulations.
Of the City of Brookhaven.
Of the City of Brookhaven.
I am not the holder of any unaccounted-for public money.
I am not the holder of any unaccounted-for public money.
Do this state.
Do this state.
Or any political subdivision.
Or any political subdivision.
Or authority thereof.
Or authority thereof.
I am not the holder of any office.
I am not the holder of any office.
Of trust under the government.
Of trust under the government.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
Any other state.
Any other state.
Or any foreign state.
Or any foreign state.
Which I, by the laws of the State of Georgia.
Which I, by the laws of the State of Georgia.
And prohibited from holding.
And prohibited from holding.
I am otherwise qualified to hold said office.
I am otherwise qualified to hold said office.
According to the Constitution.
According to the Constitution.
And laws of Georgia.
And laws of Georgia.
I will perform my duty, I will perform the duties of my office.
I will perform the duties of my office.
In the best interest of the City of Brookhaven.
In the best interest of the City of Brookhaven.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Without fear.
Without fear.
Favor.
Favor.
Affection.
Affection.
Reward.
Reward.
Or expectation thereof.
Or expectation thereof.
Now, there's a second part just for y'all. I do solemnly swear.
I do solemnly swear.
That I swear to never betray my badge.
That I swear to never betray my badge.
My integrity.
My integrity.
My character.
My character. And regulations.
Of the city of Brookhaven. I am not the holder of any unaccounted-for public money.
I am not the holder of any unaccounted-for public money.
Do this state.
Do this state.
Or any political subdivision.
Or any political subdivision.
For authority thereof.
For authority thereof.
I am not the holder of any office.
I am not the holder of any office.
Of trust under the government.
Of trust under the government.
Of the United States.
Of the United States.
Any other state.
Any other state.
Or any foreign state.
Or any foreign state.
Which I, by the laws of the state of Georgia.
Which I, by the laws of the state of Georgia.
Am prohibited from holding.
And prohibited from holding.
I am otherwise qualified to hold said office.
I am otherwise qualified to hold said office.
According to the Constitution.
According to the Constitution.
And laws of Georgia.
And laws of Georgia.
I will perform my duty... I will perform the duties of my office.
I will perform the duties of my office.
In the best interest of the city of Brookhaven.
In the best interest of the city of Brookhaven.
To the best of my ability.
To the best of my ability.
Without fear.
Without fear.
Favor.
Favor.
Expectation.
Expectation.
Reward.
Reward.
Or expectation thereof.
Or expectation thereof.
Congratulations. Alright.
Thank you.
These are two of our members to our... Our planning commission has all sworn in now. Thank you to all the sweares for your willingness to serve. And you have to stay for the remainder of the meeting if I just want to... Okay. No more open remarks. Public comment. This is the time for public comment. Do we have any... Has anybody signed up?
I have filled out a sheet.
Alright, we'll just hand that to the clerk, please. And just state your name and your neighborhood.
Thank you, sir.
My name is Alan Begner.
Oh, can you pull the mic towards you a little bit? Is it on?
I can lean over.
Okay.
Thank you, my name is Alan Begner. I am here to speak for my client Pink Pony. I am their lawyer. It came to my attention recently that in December, at a city council meeting, pursuant to a question by one of your members, your lawyer Scott Burkhold was asked, "Is it permissible legally to pass a ban on new dancing and alcohol clubs and apply it to new businesses and grandfather in the Pink Pony?" And his response was, "No, it would violate equal protection." I want to say to you that is not true, that, of course, in DeKalb County in 2001, they did the same thing. They passed a new law banning clubs and they grandfathered in the clubs there. But Mr. Burkhold's response is consistent with his billing methods, which is to charge a very small amount, to pass a ban on new dancing and alcohol, and then charge hundreds of thousands of dollars to defend a lawsuit which is made necessary by his position, which is that you cannot grandfather this because it violates equal protection. I say to you that you don't have any citizens that I can see that really care about whether Pink Pony is put out of business. It's in extreme South Brookhaven. It's off the main street. It's not near... It's near here. It's not near any sensitive uses. And that I urge you as a city council to grandfather this in and say that the citizens will appreciate the fact that you don't spend hundreds of thousands of dollars to defend a lawsuit which is almost ready to file and the possibility of millions of dollars of damages that would occur if you knew to destroy our business and fail. So we ask you to consider that, please.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Ronnie, you gotta fill out a card. Miss Hyde, the clerk here. Any other comments? Any else have a card to fill out?
Say one comment first and then fill out now?
Just put your name and do a short...
I'm Ronnie Mayer. How are y'all this evening? I'm president of the Ashford Park Homeowners Association and a community leader in Brookhaven. Ever since we've gotten out of the new city which everybody loves, the DeKalb County Police Department has... They had a tack team raising a lot of revenue at three or four different intersections. And now, since we are paying them, what, per month? A half a million dollars a month?
Still in negotiation.
Yeah, it's determined.
Well, whatever it is we're paying them is a lot of money. And I think that we should either have one of y'all or the new chief or city manager, every week that goes by, we're losing in our coffers at least $200,000 worth of... If we're gonna pay them, we need at least three or four of their tack officers to come back to Cherokee Plaza on the Fulton County line and write the 30 to 40 citations a day they were writing. And we can put that money in our coffers to help us pay that $500,000 or whatever it is a month. There's no officers chasing down the school buses on Beaufort Highway. There's nobody writing any tickets. And if we're gonna pay them, let's run this thing like a business. If we're gonna pay them, somebody needs to be accountable and go down there to either... Either you call Borough Ellis, I'll give you his personal cell number if you want, and call him or call somebody and say, "We want at least four tack officers" because I think it's they're bringing in a little more than $200,000 a month. With all... I mean, they were writing 30 to 40 tickets a day from right there at the Starbucks. And we need that money in our coffers. Thank you.
Thank you, Ronnie. Anybody else? Alright, going once, twice. Alright, the public comment section is closed. Now we'll go to the consent agenda. Marie or Susan of Bill?
Sure. Mayor, council, this consent agenda is number one, approval of April 9, 2013 work session meeting minutes. Number two is approval of April 9, 2013 regular meeting council minutes. Number three is the appointment of... Appointment professional services for financial and compliance audits to Malden and Jenkins per the RFP number 13-01, the lowest in qualified bill.
Alright, is there a motion on the floor?
I move we approve the consent agenda.
Is there a second?
Second.
Alright, any discussion? Questions? Alright, all in favor of approval of the consent agenda? Please signify so by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Alright, Madam clerk, please enter into the minutes. Any announcements? Anybody have any announcements? Marie?
Yes, just to make mention that tomorrow morning, the Development Authority, your Development Arm for the City, is having their first meeting at 10:30 at City Hall. And we're looking forward to them serving the city and, again, appreciate the appointments made by you, Mr. Mayor, and all the input that you receive from your council. You have a very strong Development Authority and we're looking forward to working with them as we look at development opportunities in the city and partnering opportunities. So they will be meeting for their first time tomorrow morning.
Okay, thank you.
I have an announcement.
Sure.
Just, I've been notified that there is a group of citizens meeting to discuss the potential for a charter school at Ashford Park Elementary. At Ashford Park, the clubhouse at Ashford Park, at 6:00 PM tomorrow. So I think that any interested citizens should go by. It's supposed to be an informational meeting to discuss options for that school.
Yes. Thank you, please.
I just want to mention that if you live in the Murphy-Candler area, look for a couple of new no-parking signs that will go up on West Candler Lake Drive, on the west side of the street. This is in response to both residents' complaints because, as we know, it's a very busy time of year with both the Boys and the Girls Little Leagues playing and people sometimes park on both sides and that presents a danger. This actually was the idea of some board members from the Murphy-Candler Boys Little League. In attempt to address the problem, they're trying to send a message to their members and work with the neighbors and be a good neighbor. So, and we've been working with them to find the right spots. And so these are the first... First, I don't know if there'll be many signs, but these are the first three signs to go up to help alleviate some of the citizen concerns and to make sure that we have free passage for both residents and emergency vehicles.
Alright. I have one. We have a town hall scheduled at Ashford Park Elementary. What's the day of that? It's next month, a couple weeks?
Yes.
The 12th? Is that a Sunday?
The 9th, I think it is.
It'll be at 7?
May 13th, excuse me.
May 13th?
At 7:00 PM.
7:00 PM at Ashford Park Elementary Cafeteria. So, please come and get all the questions in. We can go back and forth at that town hall. That's what, you know, at their council meetings and public comments, you notice that we can't really respond to you. Town hall is an experience where we can go back and forth and get heated arguments if we need to. Yeah, or not, right. Alright, any more announcements?
The Friends of Brookhaven Park is continuing their efforts to clean up and provide some improvements to the park. They're working, I think, several nights this week and Saturday. If anybody wants to come out and spend a day in the park. Chad Bowles and the Friends of Briwood Park would be more than happy to hand you a shovel, a wheelbarrow, or some other implement and let you help improve. He's got a whole laundry list of things that he's doing and all the help we can get, it would be much appreciated. Thank you.
I'd like to, on behalf of the city, also publicly thank Mr. Bowles for the tremendous amount of work he's doing at Briwood Park. He's doing an amazing job there and doing some pretty Herculean tasks. For a guy as busy as he is, but I know he's passionate, it's a lot of work that he's getting done over there. And just want to thank him publicly for that. Alright, any more announcements? Reports and presentations, we have any of those? Alright. Old Business? I'd like to change this to OL, O-L apostrophe, Business. We can do that over again the next time. Do that.
Oh, my God.
On the next agenda, it needs to say OL, Old Business. Old Business. Consideration approval of intergovernmental agreement between DeKalb County and the city of Brookhaven for police services. This is gonna be tabled?
We just tabled this again, Mayor.
Alright, a motion on the floor?
I'll move to table Old Business action item. Consideration and approval of intergovernmental agreement between DeKalb County and the city of Brookhaven for police services.
Seconded.
Any discussion? Alright, all in favor of tabling number one there? Signify so by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay, New Business. That's a consideration approval of the ordinance to amend the code of the city of Brookhaven to adopt a new article entitled Stormwater Utility.
This is a first read, Mayor. This is the consideration approval of ordinance 2013-0401 to amend Chapter 25, Water, Sewer and Sewer Disposal of the Code of the city of Brookhaven, Georgia, to adopt new order Article 5 entitled Stormwater Utility. This is a first read. That's all that'd be required for tonight.
Alright.
The next item, Mayor, would be under New Business. It'd be an action item. Consideration and approval of an intergovernmental agreement between DeKalb County and the city of Brookhaven for the allocation and distribution of proceeds from the energy excise tax. Mayor, council, there had been some questions in the work session about that that I have been able to answer. All the... This... The energy excise tax is the tax on energy used in the industrial area, primarily manufacturing. And under the state statute, it allows counties to pass this in a county-wide measure. And if counties determine they don't want to, then cities have that opportunity to do so. Part of the legislative scheme, though, is if the county passes it, that they have to share that tax income with the various municipalities, if the municipalities choose to accept those dollars. The tax is collected in every event, whether you agree to take any of the monies back or not. The... So if the ordinance has passed in DeKalb County, each other city in DeKalb County has already passed this ordinance. Brookhaven is the last city.
Probably.
Now, there was a question as to others in... Each of the other cities have passed it. And the... If you choose not to pass the ordinance, that your share or the city's share of the money will simply go back to the general fund of the county. It will not be reallocated back to the corporations that were taxed. So the choice is to take a pro-rata share of that tax money for the city or to leave it with the county and the county general fund.
So, to be clear, this is a tax that DeKalb County has passed that we will be... Anybody that applies to it will be paying for regardless if it applies to any businesses or facilities in Brookhaven. The county passed it. They will have to pay the tax to the county. All we're doing is saying, "If you're gonna make this tax, the statute allows for you to give some pro-rata proceeds to the city of Brookhaven if we have agreement with you."
It requires them to do that if you pass this ordinance.
Alright, alright. So the city of Brookhaven is not adopting any new tax here?
No, we're just getting the monies that were paid in back to the city for the use to the citizens of the city rather than to the general fund of the county.
Thank you. Anybody have any questions about that up here? I don't know if there are any questions, anyway. If you have anything to ask him first.
I do have a question. Do we know how they're allocating their pro-rata share?
It's pro... They're allocating it... It is... It does not matter where it's collected within the county. It is paid out based on population. So we will get a population share rather than an allocation based on the industrial energy use within the city.
Right. Alright. Is there a motion on the floor?
I'll move that we approve the intergovernmental agreement between DeKalb County and the city of Brookhaven for the allocation and distribution of proceeds from the energy excise tax.
Is there a second?
Seconded.
Any questions or discussion? All in favor of adopting the action item? Signify so by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
All opposed? Madam clerk, please enter into the minutes. This is passed. Okay.
Mayor, council, the next would be number three, approval of resolution R210130402 for court costs. Previously, the council had approved court costs but had not delineated those costs. The study has been made, looking at the similar-sized cities and making a determination of what we believe the cost would be. We believe that it is actually greater than the $40 that we are recommending. The amount in... I'm gonna have to defer back to...
$40.
I know, but what was the... There's an amount of...
I'd arrange from 50, 40...
90, 70?
There was a 60.
50, 40, and 60. We took the lowest one of the three. It will not change the total amount of dollars that are already set for the fines as you have previously directed us to have the fines at the same level or less than DeKalb County was. What this will do is we'll go back and do the recalculation and allocate that $40 as the processing fee and then adjust the fine appropriately downward. The net of all of this is that the processing fee, we don't have to pay all the state add-on fees to. And we are allowed to recover the costs of the running of the court in that fee. And in the fine monies that we would recollect, approximately a third of all that fine money, it always goes to the state for what they call a lot of different buckets of dollars, but they actually put into the general fund. And so...
Alright.
We can recapture our costs rather than sending monies to the state of Georgia with that portion of the dollars.
Is there a motion?
I'll move that we approve resolution R2013-04-02 for court costs.
Seconded.
Any discussion? All in favor of adopting the resolution? Signify so by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Madam clerk, please enter into the minutes. This is passed. For action item?
Mayor, council, this is a request for approval of resolution amending certain fines adopted February 12, 2013 in resolution R20130202 to comport with the fines as allowed by state law. Again, Mayor, council, the direction that you gave us was to go and set the fines at the same amount or less than the amount in the DeKalb Recorder's Court. And when we took certain fines from the DeKalb Recorder's Court and we set the fine amount at that... At the level as the Recorder's Court, we subsequently found that the DeKalb County had two other fees that they were adding on to certain activities that after we ran it by the administrative office of the courts, we found that we had set the amount because we don't have that fee, it exceeded the maximum amount that would be allowed by law. Now, there was never a fine that was collected in that manner because it would have exceeded state law on that. But so as to have this in our traffic violations bureau so we can make it so people don't have to come to court on those particular three, we need to match it up with what the state law maximums are. And that's what this action item will do.
Thank you. Is there a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I move that we approve resolution R2013-04-03, amending certain fines adopted February 12, 2013, resolution 2013-02-02, to comport fines as allowed by state law.
Is there a second?
I have a second.
Any discussion? All in favor of adopting the action item? Signify so by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Please, do what you do over there. Alright. Any other business? Alright, no other business? Public comments? There's another public comment section. Ms. Cameron? Do a period of...
I could say something, you know that.
Anybody have any comments?
Well, I have one.
Okay.
There's a public cleanup day for Murphy-Candler Park on Saturday.
Fill out the form, please. Alright. Public comments closing. Right, anybody else? Alright, thank you. Public comments are closed. Mayor's comments?